I'll call the meeting to order, please rise for Fletch.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, first item on the agenda tonight, we have to do the office for our new board member, TA Cante.
Stand, raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support. Support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the position of school board member to which I am now assigned.
The duties of the position of school board member to which I am now assigned. Congratulations. Welcome aboard. Alright, uh, next item is presentation is the class of 2022 top 10 recommendation and I will turn it over to Dr. DeMalle.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you Board of Education for allowing us time to recognize our two top 10 students of the class of 2022. Before I start, I just want to say thank you to everyone here for your attention and for being here. I want to thank the parents for all your support of these children and everything that you've done for them to put them in this position. I want to thank the Board of Education Superintendent Halloran for allowing the classes to run and allow the extra classes to encourage enrollment and electives. To allow that helps these students become top members of their top 10. And again, the last to the students themselves, you have taken every advantage afforded to you, you have worked hard and I congratulate you in this moment. And before I just get into number 10, I just want to take one moment because this is my formal last board meeting. As a Gloversville enlarged district employee, I just want to thank the Board of Education for always supporting me in these last 21 years. There are a couple of members behind me that have seen all of those 21 and see me grow into the person that I am today. So, thank you for all of the opportunities you've afforded me and thank you for your support of Rich DeMalle and where I'll be heading soon and especially to the community as well. So, without further ado. Our Gloversville High School class of 2022 top 10. The individual holding the number 10 spot in the class of 2022 plans on attending SUNY New Pulse with the hope of one day having a career in the arts. Throughout her four years at GHS, she has been involved in the drama club and masterminds. Outside of the school, you can find her volunteering her time and singing talents to our school and community, singing such songs as the National Anthem. She has also been found following her other passion, which is art. She has assisted in our mural project, which can be found outside of the cafeteria, and she has helped a countless number of people through her art. She is the daughter of Katrina and Sonia, John Hannafit, and stepmother Charlene Kilmar. With a GPA of 94.05, number 10, Olivia Hannafit. Number nine in the class of 2022 plans to attend the University at Albany in the fall, where he will study atmospheric science in hopes of one day becoming a climatologist. He is the son of Bill and Kyoko Lamato. He is a four sport student athlete playing soccer, swimming, tennis, and track and field. In the swimming, you can see him running between the track and the tennis court. Outside of athletics, he enjoys playing in our jazz band and skiing. With a GPA of 94.38. Kazama, oh, I did not get that right, did I? Help me out, where are you? Kazuma, Kazuma, Kazuma Lamato. Well, this will be the first time that I announced the top 10 out of three, so hopefully this is my mistake. The person holding the eighth spot in the class of 2022 has been a student athlete all four years of high school. Playing soccer and baseball. Outside of athletics, he is a member of our jazz band, enjoys the sports of hiking, snowboarding, and cliff jumping. He will be attending SUNY Environmental Science and Forestry College in the fall. He hopes to one day have a career in environmental conservation. He is the son of David and Holly Cook with a GPA of 94.75. Number eight, Mr. Douglas Cook. Ranked number seven in the class of 2022. This individual will be continuing her career in the fall at the College of St. Rose in Albany. She's a member of the National Honor Society and enjoys volunteering in her community. On her off time from working from schoolwork, she enjoys painting, playing the piano, reading, and hiking. She's the daughter of Erin and Lori Albanese with a GPA of 95.13, Ms. Aiden Albanese. Number six in the class of 2022 has been a three sport athlete for most of his high school career. He has played soccer, swimming, baseball, and football in his time at GHS. He's a member of the National Honor Society and will be attending Maris College next year where he will study biology in hopes of one day becoming a dentist. He is the son of Eric and Elizabeth Dillenbeck with a GPA of 95.52, Mr. Dane Dillenbeck. Holding the fifth spot in the class of 2022 is the son of Michael and Tara Bruce. As a junior at GHS, he was awarded the Elmyra Key Award and plans to attend the University at Albany in the fall, where he will study business administration with the hopes of one of becoming a businessman. Throughout his high school career, he was an active member of the jazz band and even plays the drums in his own band titled Stump City, where he has volunteered countless hours playing in school activities such as pep rallies and other school events. You can also see him play in local venues and music festivals. One of his most favorite hobbies are vinyl record collecting and watching cartoons. With a GPA of 96.40, number five, Mr. Jack Bruce. Fourth in the class of 2022 belongs to an individual who will be attending SUNY Polytechnic of Utica to study psychology, hopefully becoming a therapist one day. Throughout his four years at GHS, he was an active member of the GHS Drama Club Skidamaroo and jazz band. He is the son of Heather Wilder and Eric Foster with a GPA of 96.62, number four, Alex Foster. Third in the class of 2022 will be pursuing her goal of a career in biology and related sciences at the University at Albany in the fall. When she is not working on her academics, she can be found working out or dancing at Carol's Cameos Studio. She is also a student athlete who has participated in the sport of softball. She's the daughter of Anthony and Jamie Luciano with a GPA of 97.23, number three, Alexa Luciano. The class of 2022 salutatorian will go on to follow their passions for antiquing, poetry, and performance in the fall. Outside of school, they are an active member of the First Baptist Church of Johnstown. They have been an active member of the choir since the fourth grade and will never get, will never be able to get Can You See the Ghost of John out of their head. They are the youngest child of Charles and Pamela White with a GPA of 97.60. The class of 2020 salutatorian, Brianna White. The 2022 valedictorian will be attending Binghamton University in the fall to study mechanical engineering in hopes to one day become an aeronautical engineer. Throughout her high school career, she's been an outstanding student athlete, participating in the sports of soccer and basketball. Outside of athletics, she is an active participant in our jazz band. She is the daughter of Todd and Petra Stoller with a GPA of 97.67. Your GHS class of 2022 valedictorian, Malia Stoller. Bottom line, round of applause for the top 10 in Gloversville High School. They've been award certificates by the Board of Education. You'll also see that we've replaced the class of 21's top 10 in our A lobby with the new class of 2022. And there are also extra, I believe there are 11 by 13's out on the table for the parent, for the families to take home of our class of 2022. And just so you're aware, I've given your children editing rights to this intro because we'll do the same intro at our awards night and at graduation. So if there's anything that needs to be fixed or anything that you'd like to add, please let them know or let me know so we can make sure that it's absolutely correct on the next two occasions. Again, thank you for all your support of these children and thank you for allowing me to introduce them. You guys are all set, you can take your steps then.
Next item, we have recognition of our retirees, we had several retirees this year. I'll just read out their names and this position they held. Margaret Catchball is a teacher, Mary Conrad, teaching assistant, Mary Cooper, senior custodian. Janice Dofino, Joseph teacher, Suzanne Fitzgerald, teacher. Richard Ford is cleaner, Ellen Fry, cleaner, Richard Gannon, cleaner, Michelle Gentile, teacher, Jessica George, teacher, Lauren Erdislander, teacher, Joanna Ernagle, teacher, John Adancik, teacher, Lori Cat, our director of elementary curriculum and instruction, Kelly Martin, teacher, Leonard Martin, teacher, Andrea Bloughlin, teacher, Santo Orlando, teacher, Jay Rulson, teacher, Laura Smeeley, teacher, Joyce Ben Ostran, our food service helper, and Shelley Boggsburg, teaching assistant. Congratulations, all of you on your retirement, enjoy. Uh, next item is public comment, I don't know if we have anybody here for public comment tonight. Anybody out in virtual land has a public comment, please leave a comment. Underneath the video feed on Facebook and someone from the district will reach out to you with a response. Next item is board discussion. I don't remember everybody's attendance, so we'll do these separately, uh, we have the Board of Education minutes from the May 10th meeting and then the 18th. Uh, we'll start with the May 10th meeting, any questions or comments? Motion to approve those, Sharon seconded by Ed. All in favor on that? And then the May 18th meeting, uh, motion to approve that. Oh, louder, sorry. Motion by Ed, seconded by Kelly, all in favor? Anyone else have anything else for board discussion tonight?
I just want to say one thing, Rob, I can't be there next week for the retiree meeting and several of the teachers retiring played a big part in my life, so Ms. Smeeley, Fitzy, Catch, Rich Gannon, just thank you to you guys, thank you for everything you did for me, for all the kids in the district. Appreciate your service and everybody else as well.
Anyone else? Move along to the superintendent's report.
If I seem like I'm shouting, it's because Osama's giving me signs that, uh, those at home have a hard time hearing us, so try to use my coach voice. So first let me congratulate Dr. DeMalle again on his, uh, appointment as Fort Edward Superintendent. We wish him well. Uh, I want to welcome Mr. TA Cante to the Board of Education, just thinking how long I've known TA, I've known TA about 35, 36 years. That's why, so, uh, I know some of the people on this board have known him a lot longer than that, known him their whole life, so, uh, very happy to have you on the Board of Education. I also want to congratulate our top 10 once again for being, uh, great ambassadors of the district of Gloversville. I say this every year, but when you see and hear this accomplishments of these young men and women, uh, you realize that the country's future is in good hands. You listen to too much media and you think, uh, you start thinking negatively, but you see that the next generation is, has plenty of power players who are going to make a positive difference in this world and, and make this a better place for their, the next generation that comes after them. So we wish, uh, the class, the top 10, the top 10 of class 22 and their cohort, uh, obviously the best. And we look forward to seeing them in the award ceremony and graduation later this month. Obviously, as, uh, Mr. Curtis just said, the retirees, uh, we look forward to seeing you. Uh, we will, I will be there along with Ms. Pollin, maybe a few other board members will be there at the GTA Retirement Party on June 14th at the Concordia Club. And we appreciate, uh, the GTA leadership that has worked with the administration, uh, to put this on for them. So should be a good racket, hopefully the weather cooperates. Uh, Ms. Cook sent out an email today, uh, speaking to the behavior, uh, the wonderful behavior of the seniors. Uh, this past weekend, they had a prom and senior trip, they received accolades everywhere they went. Uh, our senior class were great ambassadors of our district, represented themselves and their families very well, so we appreciate their behavior and glad that everybody had a great time this weekend at the prom and senior trip. We have another retirement that isn't effective until 9/1, but consistent with what I've done at past board meetings, acknowledged on tonight's agenda is cleaner, uh, Mr. Ken Edwards, he's been a cleaner in the middle school for eight years and he will retire effective 9/1/2022, we wish him long health. Also on this agenda is our high school principal candidate, Ms. Christina Elias, who's here, Christina's in the back there, sitting with her new colleagues, our administrative staff, Mr. Dean Justus separated himself. Ms. Elias comes, uh, highly recommended, she was the number one candidate throughout the process, all committees. We certainly have, uh, high expectations and hopes, she thinks that she's going to do wonderful things and have an immediate impact on the Gloversville school community, so welcome to Gloversville, Ms. Elias. Uh, also on this agenda, I want to point out is a position that we created, the elementary literacy coordinator position. Uh, this is Ms. Bernadette Calendar, our Kingsborough Elementary Principal is on the agenda for this stipend and it is to assume the important aspects of Ms. Lori Kent's duties, Ms. Kent's retiring. Ms. Calendar is very knowledgeable and passionate about literacy instruction, we are optimistic that she will help our district focus our collective efforts in regards to literacy instruction at the elementary level. So I hope the elementary teacher staff can rest assured that, uh, literacy instruction remains a high priority of the district and we believe we're placing it in very good hands. Thank you, Ms. Calendar, for stepping up to do that position. Couple updates, uh, Kingsborough tree removal progress nearly complete over this past weekend. Roughly, uh, 40 trees were removed from the properties bordering the east side of Kingsborough Elementary School in anticipation of the pending capital project that will take place there. Uh, my understanding is the homeowners are very happy, the tree removal company did not just damage the fence at all, they used able to remove those trees without damaging the fence, so the fence itself has been damaged by previous limb falls, but the fence will serve its purpose, uh, by and large until the new fence. It's going to look much nicer when this is finished and obviously when we put a new fence up, the threat of, uh, limb falls damaging that new fence is, is, is gone. So we appreciate the board's, uh, recognition of this important, uh, factor and that's nearly complete, it should be complete this weekend. Also just reminder, tomorrow at 6:00 PM is the Kingsborough Community Forum on the field remediation project to take place this summer. We've sent letters out to, uh, community members who live in the vicinity of Kingsborough Elementary School. Tomorrow we will have district administration as well as, uh, CS Arch, Turner Construction, and Ambient Environmental on hand to answer any questions, uh, that community members may have about that, uh, field remediation. So certainly encourage community members who live in the vicinity of Kingsborough to attend that if they have any questions or concerns. It will be in the gymnasium, Kingsborough Elementary, tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM. We are still waiting, uh, state education approval of our capital project, it has passed every facet except the final approval. Why it's delayed, I'm not quite sure, but we expect it to be any day now, possibly even tomorrow or Thursday. And when we do, we will ask for an emergency board meeting to be held virtually so the board can approve that project so we can, uh, get moving. We're in the building season and obviously we're going to wait till, for a lot of the major work to happen until the students are out for the summer, but even, uh, setting up and, and material purchasing, things like that are being delayed because of state ed's, uh, delay on approving the project, so, uh, we are making phone calls and everything is done, everything's been done for weeks and weeks. So we hope they could get that any day now. Also, uh, update the CSEA contract consolidation, uh, all four unit leaderships and their labor relations specialists have tentatively agreed to a new contract. I want to, uh, thank Kathy Mayer for her work on that, Kathy has worked alongside, uh, Jay Gerben, Gerben Falazzo and, um, the labor relations specialist, Ed Hebert from CSEA, and we, I sent it today, I think Danielle sent it today, I can't take credit for that. Uh, please peruse it, we understand that what we did, it was a little very confusing, you take four contracts and you put together, uh, the provisions and every, all these four units had different provisions, so they're all in there for now. Uh, we consolidated where we could, but for the most part, the specificity of all four contracts remains and once this is consolidated, they elect new leadership and we want to do that before the employees leave for the summer, we can start negotiating with the new leadership and we will consolidate that contract and start, uh, paring down the provisions that you will, are specific to the four former units. Any questions about that, it was sent today, I don't expect that you've read it already, uh, but if you do have any questions or concerns and we will be asking board members, uh, who wish to participate in any contract negotiations with the CSEA this summer. Just let Danielle or me know, we're happy to have you as part of the process. Uh, our special education audit with Dr. David Mitchell is underway, I sent an email today of his update of where he's at with that. Also, obviously in light of recent events across the country, safety is on the tip of everybody's tongue. You know, the Gloversville School District led by the Board of Education has made it clear that safety is the highest priority and certainly is my highest priority and I know it is the administrative team as well. Mr. Michael Atherton, our safety officer, his sole purpose is the safety of every, uh, employee and child of this district. We had two, uh, lockdown drills today in the high school and middle school. Both of those drills were attended by Gloversville Police Department employees, administration, our safety officer. Um, I can, I'm happy to report that although we are not perfect, we have shown great gains, uh, from previous drills. It shouldn't take a, a catastrophe that, like what happened in Texas, to keep us sharp and, uh, you know, I vow to, to keep this as our highest priority and to do a better job, uh, of keeping those safety plans of each building, uh, on the, on everybody's desk and make sure that the safety team members know their roles in, in various crisis situations. We hope it is never necessary in this district and expect that, but it is something that, uh, we've taken serious, we've made a commitment to. Our tap app, our go bags, our trauma care kits, um, the, the access that law enforcement has to our cameras, the sheer amount of cameras that we have, uh, the safety vestibules that are part of this capital project. This board has made a commitment to edu, to safety in our schools and, uh, you know, we're not going to let you down. We're going to do everything we can to, to be as prepared and as possible and, and maintain safety at all buildings at all times. And sometimes that, that puts people out, uh, but when things happen like what happened in Texas, we realize that being put out a little bit, being told you need to shut your window when you're not in a room, uh, you need to go through a certain entrance, uh, when you come and leave the enter, leave the building, uh, those are small sacrifices to make in the, in the name of safety, so. Our hearts go out to the families and the victims of, of these recent tragedies and we hope that as a country, we can be better than this. And, uh, you know, this isn't a political problem, this is something that we need to really come together and solve as a country because it seems to be increasingly becoming exclusively an American problem. Any questions on safety, uh, you know, comments, ideas? I wanted to open this piece up for the board because it is important, you send your children, you represent the community, you send their children and I wanted to fly a moment if you had any thoughts or comments on our safety procedures, protocols, plans. Let me know if you do. For this summer, I'll also ask you to, if you want to sit on any brainstorming sessions that we're going to have about safety, certainly welcome Board of Education input and participation. And last but not least, uh, City of Gloversville DRI Committee update, uh, last night was our last meeting. It's been a great process, um, I submitted my vote approving all projects today. I, I expect all the projects to be approved, the slate, it's interesting how it goes, it's either you vote for all or you don't vote for any. And we are sending forth a $11.6 million, so the State, uh, Department of Finance or whichever state is, uh, agency is allocating the money will look at the $11.6 million of state, uh, requested money, pare it down to 10 million, so they will get the final say. They have been involved with the process, the state representatives, uh, every step of the way. So they know the sentiments of the representatives of the committee, I appreciate the mayor asking me to be a part of it, it was an honor. And I do have an executive session to discuss contract updates and personnel. And conclude with my report.
Any questions?
Next, we have the student board member report, before we begin, I'd just like to thank both you, Marilyn and Masa. You guys were awesome this year, boards were great, you did a wonderful job, um, I do have a nice plaque to present to both of you uh, in appreciation of all the hard work you did, so I'd like to come up and, or try to squeeze around.
you did, so I'd like to come up and, or try to squeeze around. Thank you, Marilyn. Thank you. Thank you. Awesome job this year.
Thank you.
Great job. Masa was our alternate board member, did a great job filling in when Marilyn couldn't be here. Great reports were given by both of them all year. Thank you guys so much. It's incredibly helpful getting the student perspective and everything. And now I'll turn it over to Marilyn for her last one.
Thank you, Rob. All right. So my first topic of the night is the senior weekend recap, so it was, it was so fun. It was the most fun I've had in forever, so it started off with prom at Pershore, which was held on June fourth, and was from six PM to eleven PM. Then our senior trip was at the Rocky Forest Ranch Resort on June fifth and sixth. The food was great, and there were so many things to do there, and two of my personal favorites were the banana boat and horseback riding, and I'd like to say a special thank you to Miss Cook and Miss Denny for such an amazing trip and weekend. And then my second topic is congrats to the top ten. Although they have all left, I wanted to say congratulations. You have all worked so hard to get where you are, and we are all so proud of you. Good luck to you all in the future, I know you will do amazing things and even change the world. Congrats once again. Then topic three, thank you, guys. Thank you to everyone who has attended the board meetings, watched them online, and have presented or participated in one. I have enjoyed being here, and it was such an honor being the twenty twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two student liaison. Thank you, Masa, who has always attended the meetings, written up her own reports, and filled in for me when I needed her to. You have done such a great job, and I'm so proud of you. Lastly, Masa and I would like to thank everyone on the Board of Education for having us. We had a great time, and we're so grateful to be here with you all at our last meeting for the school year. Thank you, everyone. Sorry I didn't bring wings.
We got wings one year. Yeah, it's all right, the cost has gone up, it's okay. We'll let that slide. Next items, we have recommended items eight point zero one through eighteen point one seven. Daniel, we do need to vote on eighteen point three one separately. Any questions or anybody else need anything else polled? Motion to approve eight point zero one through eighteen point seven one? Somebody wanting to make a motion to approve it?
I got you.
Thanks, seconded.
I looked as you went down.
By Mike. All in favor on those?
I should have had no idea.
Right? All right, then a motion to approve eighteen point three one? By Ed, seconded by Vinnie. All right, all in favor on that? Kelly's abstaining. Then I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss contract items. Motion by, and a personnel item. Motion by Vinnie, seconded by TA. All right, all in favor? All right, thank you, there'll be no action taken afterwards. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.